You guys got that? That normal now.
What the hell?
Please step away and be careful. No, just kidding. May I step away for just a moment, please?
Sure.
I'll be right back. And it's so nice to be able to appear by video and not just audio. You're right back.
They don't see you.
We don't see you.
Oh, here. There.
Yeah, man.
Oh, here.
Turn your camera on.
Yes, sir.
Did anyone ever figure out how to get more people on the screen than five or six? Because I can't get...
I got... The music might have to come down. In...
I'm talking to the green...
I'm sorry.
View everyone or view who's talking or active cameras kind of the center on top of the screen.
It doesn't have that. I have attendees, a list of attendees, but it only lets, yeah, five people on the screen at a time. Yeah.
I've got twenty-something squares and seven pictures right now.
That's what I got. So there's an option for the talking, the talking, the group, view everything. Right. Who's talking?
Yes, you're upside down.
I look like... I know. You, Karen and Aaron are all three upside down. It's weird on mine.
Okay. Let's go, let's go ahead and get started, people. Hey, good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Today is April the seventh, it's Tuesday, 2020, the hours time is 6:00 P.M. We are now on the city council go-to meeting. Let's go ahead and at least say the pledge of allegiance at this time while we start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence. All right, thank you. Could we have a roll, could we have a roll call, please? I'll go with Karen.
I'm going to mute the microphones because there's so much bad feedback here. A roll call being called.
Okay, go ahead and mute your, everyone mute your computers, please.
Goodoff?
Here.
Creano?
Here.
McKay?
Here.
Ogletree? Here. Chu?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda that council would like to make? If not, could I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
Second? Okay. Call vote, please.
Goodoff?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, policy items, staff reports. Mike, do you have anything?
I do not, Mayor.
Okay. Petitions or communications are all written. Hold on a minute, I gotta turn off this phone. Sorry about that, guys. For petitions or communications, I don't know if anybody that is listening in wants to make a comment. I just want to let you know that we're at a go-to meeting and other petitions and communications, if you want to, you can submit by chat or you can raise your hand and I will recognize you if you want to, you know, if you want to speak on something. Otherwise, you know, that's the only way that we could handle this. So if anybody that's listening in besides Confor wants to say something, please chime in now. Okay? What we have tonight is a proclamation, which I'll read. It says, Trinidad, Colorado, proclamation. It's a week of the young child, April 11th through the 17th, 2020. Whereas the work in Los Angeles County, Early Childhood Advisory Council, South Central Council of Governments, early learning, Rocky Mountain Center, Head Start, Peas in a Pod, Trinidad School District, Pony School, Aguilar School, Primero School, Branson School, Ankim School, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the week of the young child, April 11th through April the 17th, 2020. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs that can provide a foundation of learning for children in our community and whereas by calling attention to the need for high-quality early childhood services for all children and families within our community and state, these groups hope to improve the quality and availability of such services. And whereas public notices that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures. And whereas the future of our community and state depends on the quality of early childhood experiences provided to young children today. Now therefore, I feel T. Rico, Mayor of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, on behalf of the Trinidad City Council, hereby proclaim April 11th through the 17th, 2020, as Week of the Young Child in the City of Trinidad, Colorado, and urge all citizens during this weekend throughout the month of April to celebrate our youngest learners by recognizing and supporting the needs of young children in our community. You witness where I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affected. Mayor Philip T. Rico. And that's dated April the seventh, 2020. Thank you. And I believe that we have someone that I'm viewing. Jennifer, I guess we'll get this to you at some point, okay? Thank you very much for doing what you do for... Thank you for doing what you do for the children of the county. Okay. Item four B, we have ARPA update, Carlos Lopez, what do you have for us?
Hey, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes, sure can.
Okay, making sure. So my stint into the past couple of months and inundated with the whole COVID experience, so I've been the only one going to meetings. So we had gone to the one in January together, but there really wasn't much to report at that period. Now that we've just gone through the first quarter, we're getting someplace and we saw another meeting coming up. But from my notes, we're looking to retire the 2010 bonds, hopefully in October. And that's even with the current status what we have now. If things do change, it will be probably about ten out of the fourteen million dollars to be paid off. That's with worst case scenario, but we're still on line to paying off those bonds, which is good news, which will save spending of about 1.2 million dollars in interest costs per year. So that's going to be to our benefit, given for the other communities that are involved with ARPA. 2020 wind production was up in January, so it was a windy year time. There were going to be bucket truck trainings and full-top training, rescue, National Alignment Appreciation Day, all these things are going to go on, but because of COVID, they're postponing these trainings. Now, I don't know if the luncheon is still going on for our people here in Trinidad on April 18th, but that's something for you all to decide if that's what you should do. And I think that's better left to Mike with the power and life staff, et cetera. Did you all happen to receive the letter that Arvenia Moore sent out for the ARPA update?
Ah, yes.
Okay. You all happened to read it?
I read part of it.
Okay, that's okay. If not, I just don't want to, you know, be redundant here. But the gist of it is in there, you know, it goes about over the COVID-19 in utility operations, which are going to be continuing on. In addition, the members of utility operations are holding conference calls to exchange ideas and to discuss how mutual aid will be between member utilities would occur in the event line workers and/or plant employees would become ill or be required to quarantine. So that's the nice thing to know about. This is part of a mutual aid and assistance agreement that ARPA members have in place. So just in case if things go awry and we lose staff members because of this, we have some members to pull from for staff. I'm sure you're all aware of the issue by the governors of sending utilities disconnect. I did send an email out to all of you recently. I don't know if it was redundant, but either way, it was still sent out. Just I will, I make sure I'm doing my job as your board member to keep you apprised of anything going on. There's also information pertaining to that order regarding low-income energy assistance and payment plans. And what it says is to please contact your local utility office for additional information. So I've got to get with Rick and make sure if that's either through us or if that's going to go directly through our department here locally. I tried to reach out to him, Dave, because I just actually got the email today, but I was not successful. So hopefully I hear something. If I do, I'll send you all an email as soon as I do. The ARPA board right now has received a good report according from our accounting firm. We're in compliance with all provisions of 2010 and 2018 bond covenant, including its debt service coverage and bond account funding. And if you want to look into that, there is a website. It is dataport dot e-m-m-a dot m-s-r-v dot org. Now again, I'm being redundant here. This stuff is all in that newsletter. I'm reading from the actual note that I bought from Arvenia and then there's that attachment, which is the letter that you all probably received as well. The February sales actually have been up by 6.2%. And year-to-date, the sales are up by 2.8%, which is good considering the predicament that are wearing me right now. We're going to be having another ARPA board meeting here on the 30th of this month, so I can tell you how the first quarter numbers actually tally out. But in terms of the summary for February 2020, the member energy sales for February were 2.7% more than 2019 and 7.7% better than budget. So all in all, we're in a good position here with ARPA. They have been also working on the decommission of the Lamar Power Plant right now. So there's three phases that are going to be going on. And the first one's going to be coming up here pretty quick, where they have to disconnect a channel that goes across the road, which basically brings a pole from a crusher all the way up and over the road and then it disperses it into the actual plant from there where it burns it. So that's phase one of the decommission. Phase two and three will happen later. They have within, I think up to the end of November, I want to say, to get that first phase of commission completed. And it was given a whole year. They really didn't do much in November because of winter, but they're getting ready to start moving on it with their contracted company as of right now. That's pretty much about it. Honestly, the biggest takeaway that I've gotten in the past three months is that bond being paid off, which is going to save 1.2 million per year if we stay on track. So personally, I think that's great. I actually took a tour of the Lamar Power Plant. I met with Hussein Haria, who is the Lamar Utility Board Superintendent. And he gave me a tour of the facility and it was really kind of weird how there's been a lot of, in my opinion, things that have been done out of, kind of like they're like guinea pigs sometimes. Like they brought in a solar device that was supposed to work really well, but when they tested it, they tested it in Alaska. And when they brought it to Lamar, it didn't work well with either the altitude or with the climate. So it just kind of shows the fact that sometimes some of the things that have been done over there weren't always well thought out. So I'm trying to just keep an eye on things. Again, I'm still learning some news to the board. I'm just trying to take it in the sponge and not make too many waves, but yet I still ask questions and try to advocate as much as I can for Trinidad, especially with this whole governor's notice, because I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to be penalized for any type of situation where if we can't make our full payment, is there going to be any repercussion for ARPA or is there going to be any type of payment that's coming from the federal level to help out and therefore, you know, the stuff falls downhill? So that's what I'm trying to look out for. I had a personal call with Rick Rigel about that. He actually brought it up in our last board meeting. Right now, we're doing everything just like this on those meetings because of the COVID situation, but that's where we are. If you guys have any questions, I'm more than happy to write them down and find out more because again, my next board meeting is in a little over three weeks. So I should be able to get some other information back from you between now and then.
All right, any questions from council? If anybody has a question, go ahead and speak up. None? Karen?
I'd just like to say thank you, Carlos, for picking up the slack here. We know Mike's really busy right now, so thanks for being there and showing up and giving us a report. Appreciate it.
Aaron Ogletree?
Yeah, of course. Nice to see you guys.
Aaron Ogletree, you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Mr. Williamson? I don't know if we lost it?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Carlos, the question I had is, did Rick tell you anything? You were questioning about if there was any penalties, if a municipality for some reason can't meet their requirement payment. I think that would be something that we should be aware of. You know, if they can help us out, if that comes to be, hopefully not. The other thing that I could think of that could possibly increase ARPA's revenues because the number of people that are having to stay home, there's going to be more electricity used. So that'll increase the amount of revenue that's going into them, which would, you know, could be a factor down the road. So, you know, that would be a question to keep something in the back of your mind, get an answer for.
Well, I can tell you that we did have an executive session pertaining to an opportunity. I can't go into it too much just yet because there is some potential information that could be happening that they don't want to get out and they're waiting to see if this happens. But if it does, I can tell you that there could be an opportunity for ARPA to purchase power from another entity, which would be substantial in savings. And it would be really great. So if that's the case, we may not be able to have another way to generate revenue, but if we can cut the cost right there, you'll see the savings. In terms of increasing the ARPA revenues, I'm sorry, your first question rather, in terms of getting funding from the federal level, Rick is currently working on that right now because, you know, everything is kind of changing day by day, week by week. But that was one of my first questions to him before we had our last meeting on the, it was the 26th of March. So hopefully we'll have some more information pertaining to that by the 30th, when we have our next meeting. So we're just waiting to see if this care is asked from the federal government, does give some leeway for entities like this because we are in that category where we could be benefiting from these benefits. So I will let you know as soon as I do.
Yeah, and the other thing too is I know that they have been looking for some time for, and you mentioned it a little bit ago in your report, that, you know, they've been looking for several months when that other deal fell through to find another possible supplier to, we could purchase power through. I think that would be something that, and you mentioned that they're working on that. So keep us in tune with anything that happens there, please.
You got it.
Okay. Okay, on to our... Thank you, thank you very much.
Good to see you guys.
Okay.
Good to be here.
Thank you, Carlos. Thanks.
Okay, on to item five, our consent agenda. Five A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of March 18th, 2020, and special meeting minutes of March the 23rd, 2020, and March 24th, 2020. Approval of the bills for $1,452,903.70. Item C, approval of resolution updating the City of Trinidad Three Mile Area Plan, which actually just updates the comprehensive plan that we're required to do periodically. Item D, approval of modification of premises application by Peaster Marketing Company, doing business at Alta and number 6255 at 302 State Street and Private Richard Spencer. He's probably not on the, you know, online with us. And the purpose of that is nothing major other than moving a cooler to a three-door stand, to a standalone cooler. Item E, approval of the payroll, April the 4th, 2020 through April the 17th, 2020. And that was $354,570.36. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you.
All set.
Okay. Call vote, please?
Goodoff?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item six, public hearings, we have none. Item seven, unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business, that's an emergency ordinance per section 5.7 of the Trinidad Home Rule Charter of the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, authorizing and directing the implementation of the City of Trinidad COVID-19 Emergency Assistance Program. And that was for a total amount and dispersed amongst, I think, four different entities for $500,000. Could I have someone to introduce, please?
I would introduce.
I would introduce.
Have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, we'll take a second from, I guess, Ms. Ogletree or whoever it was. Mike, you have any discussion on that?
Not much, Mayor. I mean, City Council, our work session was generous enough to put forward $500,000 and the staff broke it up into three tiers. Tier one for those essential facilities, the hospital, the council of governments and the county health department. Then tier two for businesses for either utility assistance or rental assistance. And tier three for residential. With council's direction, we went ahead and rolled out the application form and should you approve, tonight, we, to date, received, well, we received between 75 and 80 applications. It looks like we might have duplicates because people are submitting online and they're not sure if their application went in. So we're sorting that through, but we have for sure 75 business applications and three paper applications. And on the residential side, we have 64 online applications and two paper applications. The soft deadline or the initial deadline is April 10th, that we'd like to take first consideration of those applications. So for all those online and for out there, that's, get your applications in by that time.
Okay. If there's no other discussions, call vote, please?
Goodoff? Goodoff?
Rusty?
Rusty, hurry. Put your mic on, Rusty. Charles McGiddol? Can you hear us?
Rusty, can you hear?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Sorry about that. I lost my volume for a second. I got it back.
And on the vote, Charles McGiddol, choose second rule?
Yes, and I said yes.
I thought, so we just didn't hear the two, so I'm sorry.
All right, that's all right.
McGiddol, yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. On to item eight B, which is a first reading ordinance authorizing and directing the implementation of the City of Trinidad COVID-19 Emergency Assistance Program and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to 6:00 P.M. on April the 21st, 2020. I need someone to introduce, please?
I'll introduce, sir.
Sir, okay, could I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
I can.
Okay. Any other discussion on that?
No. Can I have a minute here for a second? I had a couple of people ask me, would the churches be in consideration for some of this funding for the utilities?
Mike, do you have that?
Do we have anything on that? Because, you know, they're going to be in the same situation everybody else is.
So I've lost video here, but I can hear you on my phone. I would say, that's a good question. I'm sure they have lost revenue and they still have utilities. I would say submit an application and we will, we'll have to vet those. I don't know about separation of church and state and everything, but we're trying to help everybody here. So I will, if we receive applications, we will look into them.
Rusty, Rusty, you have a comment? Do you have your hand raised?
Yes, I do. Frank, also for the churches, I know the state has funds, separate funds set up for nonprofits alone. So that's another avenue for them to go through besides the city. So might be more help than just what we can give also.
Anthony, you have your hand raised?
I do. Ross's point about separation of church and state, I certainly understand that, but we have to, you know, utilities customers, and under the unique circumstance, we never had anything like this before. And here we are, working our way through it. And I think that maybe considering all utility customers may be a better, an additional viewpoint than just church and state.
If I should, please?
Yes.
I don't mean in a...
Yes, Les.
I agree with what, I agree with what Kelly just said.
Yeah.
The answer of council and choose cross. I, I think these are extraordinary times of treating all utility customers as utility customers is appropriate. I do not have a problem legally with the notion of allowing them to apply for assistance. But that's what I have to think.
Okay, Ms. Rico, do you have any, any questions?
No, sir, I don't.
Mr. Williamson, you have any questions?
I do not.
How about Ms. Ogletree?
No, I don't either.
Okay. And this fellow, I said, I'm in agreement. I think that they are a utility customer and I think that we need to look at it. I think it's fine. Call vote, call vote, please?
Goodoff?
Yes.
Creano?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. And you know, I think it would be a good idea that, you know, we put something in the newspaper about this and showing the amount to the community that the benefit that this community is getting, you know, from the money, whether they have issues with the marijuana or the cannabis industry or not, but they're getting the benefit of over $500,000 at this point in time. So I think it's, I think it's timely that we put something in the newspaper and so that the community know that this money that we, we have is of great benefit. sanitary sewer truck line replacement phase one, which would go to RMS Utilities for the amount of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. That funding will come from Recapital Improvement and from DOLA E I A F, DOLA E I A F grant, and that's for the phase one of the La Porta One Thousand Foot Project. We have another phase B coming in behind this. We have received four bids, so that's where that's at. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Second. Okay. Mike, do you have any thing you have to add to that? Or Tom, I'm not sure. Mike or Tom, I'm not sure if Tom is here.
No, Mayor, not really. You laid it out. You laid it out. I apologize. I lost my video, but I'm on the phone, so, um, you laid it out very well. The, the first phase bunch approval is awarded tonight. We'll let the contractor know, based on the whole COVID pandemic, we'll see when they can get a notice. The second phase will be coming shortly thereafter. We have to wait for the irrigation season to start. The second phase crosses the picket wire ditch, so with the approval tonight, we will hopefully be able to start sometime in, in May, hopefully.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good. No, any other discussion? Call vote, please.
Well, I would think that with all of this.
Go ahead.
Anthony, let's begin.
That's okay. This is not important.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Creeda?
Yes.
McKane?
Yes.
Creeda?
Yes. On item D, which is a resolution supporting a grant application to History Colorado to seek funding for the exterior stabilization, stabilization of the Fox West Eater. If it is successful, it will require a sixty-five thousand dollar match, which will be for a two hundred dollar or two hundred thousand dollar grant from History Colorado. Could I have a motion, please? Second? I guess we, okay. Mike, do you have any additional information?
Yeah, briefly, Mayor, this, this is our, our third go-round in trying to get this History Colorado grant. We, we revised several applications. This application, rather than go for a partial, it was recommended we go for the full facade, entire all four sites. So with the successful two hundred thousand dollar History Colorado grant, they want to state, tell state historic tax credits of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, you know, be a request for a DOLA, DOLA grant, a two hundred thousand grant from DOLA, and with the sixty-five thousand dollar city match, which has been budgeted for two rounds now, and it is still there, it's a six hundred and twenty thousand dollar project. With all that being said, the History Colorado funding comes from gaming and the casinos, and they're all shut down now because of the COVID, so we'll see how successful we are with this round, but we're gonna, we're gonna give it a shot.
Okay. Mr. Mattei, you have any questions?
No, I, I think that we have the money set aside for it, and so the application is what the application is going to be now as it was before. I'm not real sure what the post-COVID economy and all that's gonna lurk and how much money's gonna be available, but I tell you what, if we're not in the queue, then we're not gonna get anything, so live well with it.
Agreed. Ms. Gregor?
Hey, I have a question from my, I was going through the application, and it mentioned something about them removing the marche. Is that a permanent removal, or are they gonna take it down just to renovate the building and then put it back up?
Actually, it is a permanent, permanent removal. They, that's not part of the historic structure. It was added in the fifties, I believe, so they are talking, currently, according to the assessment by the engineering team, it's, it's not safe as it is now, so they are planning to remove it.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Gregor?
Does it have any value? Does it have any value, Mike?
I imagine it, it might. We could check into that.
Yeah. See if we could use it someplace else down the line.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Schuh, you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Ms. Ogletree, you have questions?
Yeah, I did. Mike, debate, I, I missed whether you said this or not, did they give us feedback on why the prior applications were denied?
Um, basically, they were not wanting to do just a partial. They said it would be better if we went for the whole thing. I wasn't involved in the first time around. The second time, it was a partial, and there was questions from the review committee on why, why the partial, so, uh, the, uh, urban neighborhood, Stephanie Bakken, and, and we spoke with Tara, trying to make it a full package. Before this whole COVID thing, they really thought this was a good package and it would move forward. We'll see now, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's a good question.
Mr. Williamson?
It did. I know that that feedback is really important.
Mr. Williamson?
No.
Okay.
I, I don't have nothing either.
Okay. Just to let you know, I'm not sure how many of you people have been keeping track of it, but I have. I was, you know, I've been talking to our lobbyists, and I do know that the governor has asked all the departments of J B C to try to cut back, I think something like forty million off their budget, so that's why I think Mike brings up that question as to, you know, what's going to actually stick at this point in time and what's not, so there's a substantial amount of money that they're working on trying to have to cut from their budget, so we'll see what happens. Okay, call vote, please.
Denon?
Yes.
Creeda?
Yes.
Yes.
O'Callaghan?
Yes.
McKane?
Yes.
Creeda?
Yes. Item E, District Attorney to extend an offer of employment and negotiate an employment contract with the city manager finalist, which is Mr. Valentine. Could we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second? Any discuss, any, any discussion? Mr. Mattei?
No discussion. I think it's a good idea.
Okay, Ms. Gregor?
No questions, no discussion.
Okay, Mr. Schuh?
No, no questions.
Ms. Ogletree?
No questions.
Uh, Mr. Williamson? Mr. Goodall?
No.
Okay. Call vote, please.
Denon?
Yes.
Creeda?
Yes.
Yes.
O'Callaghan?
Yes.
McKane?
Yes.
Creeda?
Yes. Item F, resolution showing, showing support for continued improvements to the B N S F rail line used by the Southwest Chief Amtrak in Kansas, Colorado, and New Mexico, and committing to a local share of twelve thousand five hundred dollars if the grant application is successful. Just to give you a little bit of briefing, like I said, that money was never expended the last go-round, which we were not successful, which was Tiger nine, Tiger Grant Nine, so I'll ask Mike to fill in a little bit here. So this is just money that I think we've been planning on having if it were, if we were successful in moving forward with this new bill grant that's coming forward. So could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Mike, do you wanna fill in anything else?
Um, no, Mayor, this is kind of like all grants now. This is a federal government grant. We'll see if our application is successful this time. We tried the last time. We have the executive director who has worked on this for the Southwest Chief Commission, so they've done all the, the light work. I just want to point out that in this resolution, it is your support with the continued caveat that the Front Range Railroad Commission agrees to commit to extending the line south of Pueblo to Trinidad, so that is in there. I don't have much else to add.
And, you know, the money wouldn't be expended unless we were successful, and I, I think at the last meeting, I said that, I think they said it probably would not be due until, possibly even after the first of the year, so just to let you know that it's not going to have to be expended right away, so we'll find out exactly, exactly when that might have to come around. Call vote, please.
I've got a question.
Sure.
For a second here. On that, Mike, I read something in the deal about Colorado Springs doing a deal to extend the railroad up to there from Springs to Denver. Does this grant have anything to do with that, or is it, this separate?
I think the mayor would have a better response than him sitting on the board.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Schuh, what it is, is this is a continuance of some of, just replacing some of the rails between, I think that's coming out of Lahaina down through this area. That part that you're talking about is a long-range goal, which would go to, you know, Pueblo and Colorado Springs and Denver, so this money would be utilized strictly for the Southwest Chief Rail Line that's in existence now.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Okay. All right, go ahead, call vote, please.
Denon?
Yes.
Creeda?
Yes.
Yes.
O'Callaghan?
Yes.
McKane?
Yes.
Creeda?
Yes. Item G, a first reading of an ordinance granting protection to contributing historic resources within the Alcorazon, the Trinidad Historic District, and setting a hearing date for consideration of ordinance, of said ordinance to six P M. on April the twenty-first, twenty-twenty. Could I have someone to introduce, please?
I won't introduce.
Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a first and a second, okay? Any discussion? Mike, do you have anything to add to that? Or less?
Mayor, if I could, if Mike could open to, to cut in, I would begin by asking if all of you received the most recent version that was, I believe, updated to your, your drive, that has the specific ordinance provisions that would be affected if you approved this change? Did, did all of you receive that?
I did.
Okay. I, I hope everyone did, and again, it does have the specific ordinance provisions, like I, I just said. There is one additional change, though, if I could, please, that, that a council member suggested to me, and that is in paragraph six, instead of the application of murals, that should read in the singular and the plural, so I believe that should read the application of a mural or murals, if that's acceptable. But other than that, and I, if any of you have any comments on what I've said so far, I will, will still be quiet, but this is what I have mentioned to you previously, and this is the beginning, it seemed like this was a, an important beginning to do regarding this simply to preserve contributing buildings in the historic preservation, the Corazon, the Trinidad Historic District, and I do want to say also, Mayor and council members, that Ms. Clark is on with us as well, if you have any questions of her.
Okay, let's go ahead and take, Mr. Mattei, do you have any questions?
No, sir, I do not.
Ms. Gregor?
No, sir.
Mr. Schuh?
No, I don't have any.
Ms. Ogletree?
Well, the only, excuse, the only thing I thought maybe to make that easier is just to put parentheses around the S, you could just have the application of murals with parentheses around the S, so then it's singular and plural.
Okay. Good idea. It's probably what's a true order.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Williamson?
I'm sorry, I lost my audio for a second, but I was, I was wondering, existing murals, will they be grandfathered under this?
They will, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Goodall, any questions? Okay?
No, sir.
I have no questions on that, they're just, hopefully that the public will know that until moratorium, moratorium is lifted, that, you know, this is a prohibition on any new murals out there, hopefully they'll understand that. No further discussion, call vote, please.
Denon?
Yes.
Creeda?
Yes.
Yes.
O'Callaghan?
Yes.
McKane?
Yes.
Creeda?
Yes. Council reports. Anything, Mr. Mattei?
Nothing to report, other than what's obvious.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Gregor?
Nothing that really pertains to city business, but I just want you to know, there's a growing trend in the property and casualty insurance businesses that there are going to rebate premiums to people because they know that you're not using their vehicles, people aren't using their vehicles that much, so there's three major companies that have already said that there's a program out there, so that's a little bit of relief, and for those who are listening, if you call your insurance agency, if you'd be eligible for that, we think.
Hey, Karen, the question I had, and I saw this, and I, I think this is, this COVID-19 is going to affect the, you know, personal medical insurance.
There you go.
Yes.
There you go.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Council reports. Uh, anything, Mr. Matei?
Nothing to report, other than what's obvious.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Ms. Gregel?
Nothing that it really pertains to city business, but I just want you to know there's a growing trend in the property and casualty insurance businesses, that there are going to rebate premiums to people because they know that you're not using your vehicles, people aren't using their vehicles that much. So, there's three major companies that have already said that there's a program out there. So, that's a little bit of relief. And for those who are listening, if you call your insurance agency, if you'll be eligible for that rebate.
Hey Karen, uh, the question I had, and I saw this, and I, I think this is, this COVID-19 is going to affect the, uh, you know, personal, uh, medical insurance. I saw a projection a couple of days ago that there, there, there's a projection out there. It could increase as much as 40% this next year. Anything that you've been hearing from your agencies?
No, I haven't heard anything of that. I think it's too soon.
Okay.
And really, uh, health insurance is rated geographic place. So, Colorado, Colorado has a fairly low, uh, percentage of individuals that have COVID. And, uh, so I'm thinking we should be pretty good. I do know that the Affordable Care Act has been extended to April 30th for people that don't have health insurance. And a lot of the insurance, health insurance companies are waiving deductibles of COVID cases now.
Okay, good. Okay, Mr. Shu, you have any questions or anything to report?
Not further, anything, nothing.
Ms. Ogletree? Ms. Ogletree?
I, uh, I got to sit through lunch, uh, not, yes, I do. Um, I got to yesterday, uh, attend online, um, a meeting that Wally called with, uh, a lot of local business people, and he did a great, Wally Wallace did a great job explaining all of the different programs that are available. And then just wanted to note that, as I understand it, the city website has a link for COVID business support, that people can find out where they can go to for pay, uh, paycheck, payback, kinds of grants, and other things. And it's just really important that people are, are taking advantage of all of the things as quickly as possible.
Uh, Mr. Williamson?
Uh, nothing.
Uh, you know, and why don't we, I don't know if you wanna talk about that. Yesterday, you and I had a slight, or yesterday, we had a discussion about what you guys were doing up at the, uh, do you wanna do that now, or do you wanna do that offline with me personally?
No, that's fine. Um, uh, we are utilizing 3D printers, um, and they're in natural resources to produce, uh, several items that maybe, hopefully, uh, don't become pertinent, but may. Um, the one that we're working on right now is a, um, face mask that would be, uh, able to be utilized by medical workers versus fonder's, things of that nature. So, um, it's act, it's actually 3D printed, um, using, um, 3D printer technology and, uh, commonly sourced materials. So, uh, it's just, um, something that a lot of, uh, businesses may be able to do to have access to 3D printers. I actually spoke to Felix, um, Lopez at the college, and he, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, he had contacts at the college on the state level, and they're gonna be, um, utilizing their printer system, 3D printer systems for that sort of thing, too. So, it's just an idea that, that businesses can use to, uh, to help out in this process.
And I think you had mentioned to me last night when we spoke, uh, that the ones that you are producing, Yuri, you are, uh, providing those to the, uh, local hospitals, is that correct?
Yeah, there is potential for that. Um, we're going to be reaching out to them to see if they're interested.
Okay, good. All right.
And we are, yeah, we're also, I've, I'm, I'm drives to, um, obtain other PPE equipment for them, uh, respirators, gloves, uh, that's, that sort of nature.
Okay. Well, it goes, it goes to show that, you know, there are people, uh, that are trying to do something different for, in this, in this time with all of these issues with this COVID-19. So, uh, you know, thank you and, uh, the company that you work for that, uh, you're trying to do something. So, uh, you're stepping up to the plate, and that's, that's great. Uh, Mr. Goodall, Mr. Goodall?
So, the only thing I have is, I spoke with Mike a little bit about this, and I was concerned with the fact when, um, our first confirmed case came about, the social media, how brutal it was, and the damnation of this girl is, like, they were ready to haul her to the town square and lynch her. I think it's pos, uh, necessary for us to keep a positive note to, to the public, not to discourage people who are sick from coming forward in fear of, uh, retribution from the public. I mean, it was, I don't know if anybody else thought, but I thought it was pretty, uh, pretty terrible the way they were commenting about this girl. So, I think we need to keep a positive, uh, note out there for people and try to curb this, um, hatred that was spread to that.
Well, you know, that's the problem with Facebook and some of the social media, is that, uh, you know, people get angry, and the first thing they do is they start posting stuff, and it, it goes off the charts immediately. So, that's, uh, that's the big problem that exists. And, um, and fortunately, I don't get on, uh, Facebook. I hear through the grapevine of some of the comments that were made, which were, like you said, were pretty bad. Uh, and that's not the way to, you know, to tag on to something, it's not the time. Uh, for my report, I just wanted to mention, I think, we already mentioned this once before, but on the 2nd of this month, uh, the Fisher's Peak property was transferred over to the Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Uh, yesterday, I was on a Zoom meeting with, uh, THK, who is, uh, the master planner. Uh, we had a three-hour initial meeting, uh, setting up different, uh, we're just talking about what has to move forward with this entire project and how it's going to lay out. So, I'll be keeping you guys abreast about, um, how that's gonna work. Uh, like I said, with the Southwest Chief, had a meeting there, and we're just continuing to, I'm still happy to just, uh, argue with them about making sure that we keep Trinidad and Lahana line intact. Um, a little upset with the, uh, company that we had hired. Uh, they seem to be pushing a lot of the language and stuff toward, uh, Colorado Springs and Denver. Uh, fortunately, that I do have a lot of, uh, support from Rick Klein, um, Sal Pace, uh, Play Heart, uh, and several of the other commission members. So, uh, trying to make sure that they keep the eye on the ball, that, uh, they keep that. I've also stayed in contact with, uh, a lot of our, uh, local, uh, well, our state representatives. I talked to Holtorf. Uh, I've also talked to Crowder, and I've talked to our representatives from Bennett's office, as well as, uh, um, Gardner's office on the stimulus package, about the money that's supposed to come into Colorado, and, uh, how it's going to trickle down to us. And there are some questions as to how much will actually trickle down to the local level. So, um, that's a, that's a, that's a big concern right now. So, uh, that's it in a nutshell, uh, from my end. Um, I've also just, just let you know, I've just kinda kept in touch with Debbie, uh, see if she, keep, keep asking her to keep her ears to the grindstone, to see, uh, to the ground if there's anything that she's hearing. So, if some urgent comes up, I will be passing that information on through Mike or Les. Uh, okay, Mike, do you have anything to report?
Um, nothing really. Well, I just wanna praise staff, um, for working through the crazy times that we are, you know, from home, uh, not, not gathering in, in groups at the shops, and they're, they're getting the job done, both City Hall and out there in the field. And I think we're providing the same service to citizens that they received before. Um, and, uh, I just need to thank them, and then, uh, I need to thank council for, um, showing the confidence in me and naming me city manager, and we're gonna do our best to keep this team going. So, thank you.
Well, Mike, I will say one thing, you know, you've, you've taken the bull by the horns here, and, uh, I appreciate it very much, and I'm sure the rest of council feels the same way. Uh, Les, do you have anything to report?
I do, Mayor, and, and council members, thank you very much. And I, I would say to that point that I'm, I'm looking forward to rapid and fruitful contract negotiations with Mr. Valentine. I'm sure, uh, I'll be reporting on that to council in, in short order. And I, um, on behalf of staff, I, Mike is willing to be committed. He may not be under contract yet, but he certainly has comported himself as a wonderful city manager through these very trying times. And I, and I haven't spoken with one of, or of you, I know a, a number of you, uh, are, are very glad that, that Mike was the individual that, that you have selected. Um, with, with that having been said, I would like to remind council that we now have an executive session, a special meeting executive session tomorrow at 4:30. And that's going to be in council chambers. Of course, we will be, uh, uh, you know, the social distancing from each other, and, uh, but, but we are going to be meeting in, in council chambers. So, uh, that is all I have. Uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions for Les?
I have two comments.
Okay, please.
My first comment with regard to Mr. Wallace, that if he doesn't have a contract, but he's got deep roots, that's better. And with regard to tomorrow's meeting at City Hall, everybody mask off.
Okay. Okay, uh, motion to adjourn, please.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Les. So good.
Second.
Call vote?
There you go.
Yes.
There you go.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Yes. Hey, Les? I'm gonna call you on a different thing when, uh, when, when we're off here. I'll, I'm gonna give you a call, I want to talk to you about something, okay?
Okay, so, perfect.
All right, thanks. Call you back.
Thank you a lot, everybody.
Good night, thanks. Good, good job.